All right. All right, then, we will call the meeting to order. We have 150 voters present in the room so we can begin. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If the tellers would come forward to be sworn, please. And the gentleman in the balconies.
I can. I do.
All right, we'd like to go over some of the rules and procedures governing town meeting tonight. All voters must be sitting in designated sections. The way we're going to do voting tonight, all votes will be by voice vote first. In instances where I cannot discern the majority, or the two-thirds majority as the case may be, or where a vote is immediately challenged by five voters, we will use the electronic handsets. When I announce that voting is open, you'll have 10 seconds to vote. You can press 1 to vote yes, press 2 to vote no, none of the other buttons work. During that 10-second time, you may change your vote. The vote in place at the end of the 10-second interval is the one that will be recorded. Mass General laws, Articles 1, 2, 3 of the town bylaws, and Roberts Rule of Order govern the running of this town meeting. All amendments must be in writing and signed. If you wish to speak, raise your hand, please be obvious. After being recognized, stand and go to the nearest microphone. There's a microphone here on the floor, there's one in the center of the balcony, and there's one over here at the podium. State your name and your address. Confining your comments to the article or question that's on the floor. And you may not speak on the same question more than once until everyone who has not been heard has had a chance to speak. Tonight, we are continuing an annual town meeting that we started last month, and we also have a short special town meeting to do tonight. So what we'll do is we will briefly, shortly, we'll adjourn from the annual town meeting, go into the special town meeting, conclude that business, and then resume the annual town meeting. Thank you for attending. This is important business that is essential to the function of our town. Our goal is to complete all business tonight. I ask that you remain for the duration of the meeting. I'd also like to thank the Finance Committee, who's sitting up front here. They've put in many hours, working with the town administrator and the various department heads and others to study the articles that pertain to finances and give their recommendations on each. They are volunteers who perform an essential service for this town. Please join me in thanking them for their service. Mr. Lyman, did you want to make some comments?
As the moderator stated, we are continuing our May 6 meeting, and within that, we're going to have a three-artikel special. The recommendations on those three articles and the remaining 12 articles on the annual town meeting are presented and supported by the Finance Committee. At the end of your packet, you will see a page, it's a two-sided page, that will show you all of the amendments we're going to make tonight. And let me just explain that. On May 18, the town voted to approve a debt exclusion to allow the funding for the debt payment for the police station, town hall, and fire to be paid from tax revenue as opposed to available funds. The purpose in doing that was to free up free cash so that it could be further allocated for capital needs. So once we take our votes in the special, we will then be able to do the business that's necessary in the annual town meeting. And based on the recommendations of the Finance Committee, we will ask you to approve $668,799 in appropriations. So as you follow through, the original annual town meeting booklet has been updated to reflect the remaining articles as they were originally proposed. And then we will present the amendments. Thank you.
All right, then, at this point, we will adjourn from the annual town meeting and open up the special town meeting. Will the clerk please read the warrant? All right, we'll take a vote, then, to adjourn. Edit into motion. All right, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Will the clerk please read the warrant?
Plymouth SS to either the Constable of the Town of Whitman. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Whitman, qualified to vote in the election in town affairs, to meet in Town Hall in said Whitman on Monday, the 17th day of June 2019, at 7:45 PM, then and there, to act upon the following articles, Articles 1 through 3. You are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting a protested copies thereof in not less than eight public places in the town 14 days at least before the day of said meeting. Hereof fail naught and make due return of the warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of holding said meeting, given under the hands this 29th day of May 2019. Dr. Karlov Kowalski Chair, Daniel L. Salvoggi Vice Chair, Brian J. Bazanson Clerk, Randy G. Lamatina Jr., Member, Justin Evans, Member. Warrant attestation. I hereby certify that by virtue of the written warrant, I have posted eight copies of said warrant in various sections of the town, with two copies in each precinct dated May 30, 2019, attested by Constable Christine M. May Stafford. Thank you.
All right. Article 1, to see if the town will vote to transfer $532,432 of the appropriation made from free cash under Article 8 of the May 6, 2019 fiscal year, 2020 annual town meeting to the capital stabilization account or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second discussion. Any discussion of Article 1? All right, then, we'll take a vote on Article 1. This does require a two-thirds majority, so if the vote is not unanimous, we'll use the electronic handset. All in favor of Article 1, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 1 is adopted unanimously. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $532,342 outside the levy limit as permitted by the May 18, 2019 debt exclusion vote, to make payment on the debt authorized by Article 1 of the November 17, 2008 annual town meeting or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second discussion. Ma'am.
Athenee Oteena, Precinct 3, 344 Washington Street. I just want to know what the right number is because Article 1 has 432 and Article 2 has 342.
Mr. Lyman?
Both numbers are correct. The original article included $90 more than was needed.
Yes, sir.
Neil Gorman, 28 Court Street. This is basically just to affirm the results of the override election we just had. But I just want to ask a question, since this is an ongoing debt. How much of the money for the police station, the fire station, has come out of the motor vehicle fine fund or the ambulance fund in recent years? Thank you.
Mr. Lyman?
None.
Any other discussion of Article 2? All right, then, we'll move to a vote, then, on Article 2. All in favor of Article 2, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 2 was adopted unanimously. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $40,479 to pay for costs associated with installing LED lighting in the Connley and Duval schools or take any other action relative thereto. Motion and a second. We have a motion and a second discussion. Any discussion of Article 3? All right, then, we'll move to vote on Article 3. All in favor of Article 3, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 3 is adopted unanimously. We have a motion to adjourn the special town meeting and a second discussion. All in favor of adjourning special town meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Our special town meeting is adjourned. We now return to the annual town meeting. Article 30, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $65,870.65 for the first of three annual payments to lease purchase and equip three 93 Cruisers or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion to amend Article 30.
Move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $43,915 for the first of three annual payments to lease purchase and equip two police Cruisers or take any other action relative thereto.
All right, we have a motion to amend and a discussion. Any discussion of the amendment? All right, then, all in favor of amending Article 30, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, Article 30 is amended. Discussion of the amended article. Mr. Kane.
Sean Kane, 31 Forest Street. I guess my issue is this, and it's not just on this article, but all the preceding articles. I'd like people to take a moment and think about the process that we've evolved over time and the process that I think the policy suggests that we should follow. At the May 2015 annual town meeting, there was policy put into play about how capital articles should be approved. Right now, we don't have a capital plan, and the policy in place says that there should be a capital plan, and it's pretty explicit, very specific. We're not currently following that policy. And I think for us to go forward with a number of these articles is just, it undermines the process. If we sacrifice in a small way in the short term, the next couple of months, and hold off on funding these articles, with the exception of safety, if there's any of these articles that are a safety issue, if a department head or, you know, a chief stood up and said, hey, this is a, this is non-negotiable, it's a safety issue, I certainly would fund that. But barring a safety issue or like a compliance issue, I really think we should hold off on funding these articles until we have the five-year capital plan in place. That way, we can assure that moving forward, we're doing our due diligence, we can then create a financial forecast, which obviously, according to best practices, the financial forecast allows you to determine definitively whether or not you should spend or save. And right now, we don't have that. So we don't have a, we don't have a comprehensive financial forecast, we don't have a strategic plan, we don't have a capital plan. So even though the content in some of these articles is important, I think we should hold off until the process is in place. Once the process is in place, then I think we should fund them accordingly.
Further discussion, Mr. Lyman?
As I stated in our last gathering and before that repeatedly, in public meetings before the Board of Selectmen, in October, or November, sorry, we engaged Collins Center at UMass to assist us in developing a comprehensive financial plan. The process for doing that involved analyzing our capital spending over the last 10 years, our current requests, and the capital requests that have been submitted over the last year, and they total about 70 items and not counting the DPW around $15 million. We are developing a capital plan. It won't be available until we've completed the process, which will still be a couple of months. The policy that Mr. Kane refers to allows town meeting to act, does not prohibit town meeting from acting. And all of the requests that are presented today have been capital requests for a number of years, and we're, to some degree, clearing the board with some of them. You will see that there are a number of articles that we are going to recommend passing over in order to put them in the queue for prioritization. But I don't know what failing to act on these requests would accomplish.
Further discussion on Article 30. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Mr. Kane?
Well, I think specifically what it would accomplish is it would hold a, town meeting is the final say on how we spend our money. And what would happen is we would say, we're not going to move forward unless the process is in place. We're not in a good place financially. It's reckless to spend money when you don't have a plan. These are just sound financial practices. To make the argument that we just haven't had enough time, I think is a bit of an exaggeration. They waited till October, November to contact the Collins report, and now it's not ready. So unfortunately, I think the buck stops with us, town meeting. So we hold off, we wait a couple of months, and then when the process is in place, we fund it. So it's a small sacrifice in the short term so that we can get the process in place so that we can have long-term, better due diligence and all that stuff. Again, barring if it's a safety issue, if it's a compliance issue, I don't think we should not fund those things. I do think the schools should be included in that as well. This is a big deal, and I think people should really stop and consider this before they choose to fund these articles.
Other discussion of Article 30. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee has met with all departments regarding these articles, and our recommendations are presented for your review. Thank you.
Other discussion of Article 30. All right, then, we will move to vote, then, on the amended Article 30. This does require a two-thirds vote, so if this isn't unanimous, we'll use the electronic sets. All in favor of Article 30 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 30 is adopted. Article 31, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $100,000 from available funds for the purpose of resurfacing and/or installing surface treatments on various town streets or take any action relative thereto. Mr. Lyman?
I would request that Article 31 be amended only with respect to funding, to read "from capital stabilization."
All right, then, we have a motion and a second to amend Article 31, to read "to see if the town will vote to appropriate $100,000 from capital stabilization for the purpose of resurfacing and/or installing surface treatments on various town streets or take any action relative thereto." Discussion of the amendment. All right, all in favor of amending Article 31, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 31 is amended. Discussion of the amended article. Sir.
Neil Gorman, Court Street, again. I'd just like to point out that in the previous part of town meeting, the DPW made it clear that they would only be able to pave a total maximum of four streets per year, even with, when fully funded. Thank you.
Other discussion of Article 31. All right, then, yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Mary Fox. I live at 565 Washington Street. I have a question. In regarding, taking, as long as we did, you're the moderator, to get the quorum, we do have these. It seems to me we're hustling through these amendments almost to get out, because we're not even using this equipment. Instead, we're going by this vocal vote, and people who really have questions are allowed to get up here, but they'll be steamrolled over. And the next thing is, I like everybody on the Finance Committee. However, I personally attended meetings, and I, but Board of Selectmen, and with Fire Department, Police, et cetera, and I know for a fact that they were pressured, heavily pressured, into bending to this budget. And instead, the school, if you will, got the short end.
Ma'am, I'd ask you to confine the comments to Article 31.
I'm asking you, why we're not using what we already have?
As I, as I outlined at the outset, we were going to do voice votes first, and if it becomes a question of we can't decide what they are, or there's a motion, a vote is questioned by five voters immediately, we will use the electronic handsets. And that's specified in the town bylaws, by the way.
Would you like those five voters to stand, because it's a little hard to hear them?
Anybody can do it, yeah.
If they say no, I disagree. We can stand, and we use these.
You can challenge the vote if you like to. Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Further discussion of Article 31? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Kelly Melito, 5 Butternut Lane in Whitman. I was just wondering, getting on what she said, it does say the Finance Committee recommends some of these. Can we get a number? Some of them say seven to zero. Could we get a breakdown of what they recommended and by how many?
Mr. Lyman?
All of the Finance Committee recommendations are on the last two pages of your warrant packet. They're on the amendment, not on the original article, which has not been voted.
Was there more discussion? Yes.
Bruce Martin, 54 Park Ave, Department of Public Works, Highway Superintendent. In regards to the, to the Chapter 90, $100,000 article, I'm not sure that I stated that we can only do four roads a year. We do as many roads as it costs to do. This year, we're doing Beulah Street right now. That was a year's worth of Chapter 90 money, $330,000, you know, $30,000,000 when it's all said and done. This extra $100,000 is, you know, we're asking the town to pitch in, to start helping pave the roads along with the Chapter 90 money. $100,000 usually will represent one, perhaps, side street, or if we're trying to do a longer road, we will be able to complete a longer road by augmenting that 325 we get per year from the state with the $100,000. So that's what this article's about. It does, it's not a certain amount of roads every year, it depends how long the roads are and what they need to have done to them.
Other discussion on Article 31. All right, then, we'll move to a vote on Article 31 as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
All right, we'll use the electronic voting. This does require a two-thirds vote. We can get to Article 31 as amended. The polls are open. All right, and the polls are closed, and Article 31 as amended is adopted. Article 32, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $48,500 to purchase and equip a 2018 Chevrolet K3500 utility body four-by-four truck with plow or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Lyman? We have a motion to pass over Article 32. Do we have a second? Any discussion? All right, then, all in favor of passing over Article 32, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 32 is passed over. Article 33, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $39,291 to purchase and equip a 2018 Chevrolet full-size K250 pickup with four-by-four truck and plow or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. A discussion. Do we have an amendment?
Really isn't necessary. The raise and appropriate was the original line of the article.
Okay, then. Any discussion then on Article 33? Yes, Mr. Young?
Bruce Martin, 54 Park Ave, Highway Superintendent. This, this addresses a need for one of our trucks that is in really bad shape. It's barely getting inspection stickers every year. The body's rotting, the four-wheel drive doesn't work. We're filling cavities of rust with spray foam and then painting them green so we can get stickers. The truck is 15 years old. It's seen its time, and I'd ask the town to support the article, please.
All right, any other discussion on Article 33? Mr. Anderson?
The Finance Committee recommends this Article 7-0.
Any other questions or discussion on 33? All right, then, we will move then to vote on Article 33. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Article 33 is adopted. Article 34, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $130,807 to purchase and equip a 2019 International 35,000-pound GVW truck cab and chassis with plow or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Lyman?
Move to amend Article 34 to reflect the source "from capital stabilization."
All right, then, we have a motion to amend Article 34, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $130,807 from capital stabilization to purchase and equip a 2019 International 35,000-pound GVW truck cab and chassis with plow or take any other action relative thereto. Discussion. All right, then, we'll move to a vote on amending the article. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 34 is amended. Discussion of the amended article. Mr. Martin?
Again, this is one of our fleet of 1999 trucks, one of the larger trucks. We use for salting operations and plowing operations. There's a couple of these trucks we're having large problems with the frames rotting. The trucks actually look pretty good when you walk up to them, but if you look underneath to the frame, the frames are separating from rust. They're 20 years old. We're going to save the body on the truck because of stainless steel and put the body on a new cab and chassis to try to save as much money as we can. But again, this is all we needed. We need these trucks in the winter, and, you know, it's 20 years old.
Mr. Anderson?
The Finance Committee voted 7-0 to recommend this article.
All right, any further discussion of Article 34? All right, this, this one will also require a two-thirds majority. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The article is adopted unanimously. Article 35, to amend the town, to see, I'm sorry, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $14,000 to install a motorized physical education curtain for educational purposes to increase class size or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Lyman?
Move to amend the source for funding for Article 35 to appropriate $14,000 from free cash.
All right, then, we have a motion and a second, to amend Article 30, 30, I'm sorry, Article 30.
35.
Throw up to 35. Now we are. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $14,000 from free cash to install a motorized physical education curtain in the Whitman Middle School Gymnasium for educational purposes to increase class size or take any other action relative thereto. Discussion of the amendment. Yes, ma'am?
If there's a teacher here who teaches that class, I'd appreciate them speaking up. As a former teacher who is not a gym teacher, from Long Island, we were sued. That is, sounds to me like a very inexpensive situation, but very dangerous. It's electrical, et cetera. I would like to take, have the school speak to it and the person involved. I do not want any child hurt or lawsuit, nor do I think we should be increasing class size. Period. Have teachers, more teachers, not more equipment that will divide the gym. Period. Strong enough, let the person pull the doors, if they must have doors to divide it, not anything that's electrical or mechanical. That's it.
Mr. Small?
The manner in which this increases class size is it would allow us to run two classes concurrently in the gymnasium, so we'd be able to separate it, two separate gym teachers, so that it would actually, in effect, reduce the class sizes to one teacher teaching. As far as it being motorized, that is what's recommended per, all the guidelines that our facilities department has studied. that our Facilities Department has studied. We used to, at one point in time, have a push curtain in there, and this would be going in the same place where that was, but the mechanical, electrical way is the recommended way to do it, and if it wasn't safe, we would not do it.
Any other discussion on the amendment to Article 35?
One more time. I do come from New York and Long Island. I want to know then, who is in charge of the switch? Where is it, and how do you make sure each child is where they're supposed to be? And not crossing or hurt. We were sued, not in my district, in another district. The child, okay, unfortunately, it was fatal. So please don't tell me it's safe, everything's safe until it's not. I want to know, you have two classes divided. Okay, fine, divide them. Let them use separate spaces. You know, let them have separate teachers. I want to know then, who's responsible? That's the point. Who is responsible for pulling the switch, closing the door?
I'm sure.
They thought somebody was. He was in the office. The girls were not all out. Okay? It's as simple as it gets. $15,000 to me sounds too cheap. You get what you paid for. Please, let's consider more faculty, less gimmicks.
And a switch like that can be controlled by a key. I'm sure our Facilities folks have taken those things into consideration. I have the utmost in confidence. Nobody wants to see a child get hurt. We would make sure that it would be safe. We would take every precaution. We're Massachusetts, not New York, so I can't speak to how they do things out there, but I know here in Whitman, we're going to make sure our kids are safe.
Any other discussion of the amendment? Sir?
Michael McKenna, 92 Old Mansion Lane. Is this only going to be used for physical education classrooms? Or is it going to be used for academic, is it only going to be a divider just for PhysEd?
It's only in the gym. It's only for PhysEd.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion of the amendment. All right, we'll now vote on amending Article 35 to change the funding source. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The article is amended. Now, discussion of the amended article. All right, then, Mr. Anderson?
The Finance Committee voted to recommend this Article 7-0.
Further discussion of Article 35 is amended. All right, then, we will now move to a vote on the amended Article 35. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Article 35 is adopted unanimously. Article 36, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $25,000 to replace exterior doors as follows. Two at the Whitman Middle School, three at the Conley Elementary School, and two at the Duvala Elementary School, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Linum.
Move to amend the funding source from raise and appropriate to appropriate from free cash.
All right, then, we have a motion and a second to amend Article 36 to see if the town will vote to appropriate $25,000 from free cash to replace exterior doors as follows. Two at the Whitman Middle School, three at the Conley Elementary School, and two at the Duvala Elementary School, or take any other action relative thereto. Discussion of the amendment. All right, none, then we will move to vote to amend Article 36. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The article is amended unanimously. Discussion of Article 36 as amended. Sir?
Neil Garman, Court Street. What's wrong with the doors?
Mr. Small?
There are various doors in the schools that are actually rotting out. The door jambs are rotting, and the bottoms of the doors are rotting. They do need to be replaced.
Other discussion of Article 36. Mr. Anderson?
Finance Committee voted 7-0 to recommend this article.
Other discussion of Article 36. All right, then we'll move to vote on Article 36 as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Article 36 is adopted unanimously. Article 37, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $45,000 to install thumbpiece latches to all interior classroom and office doors of Whitman Middle School, Conley and Duvala Elementary Schools, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Linum.
Move to amend Article 37 for funding to vote to appropriate $45,000 from free cash.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend Article 37 to see if the town will vote to appropriate $45,000 from free cash to install thumbpiece latches on all interior classroom and office doors of Whitman Middle School, Conley and Duvala Elementary Schools, or take any other action relative thereto. Discussion on the amendment. All right, then, we will vote to amend Article 36. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Article 36 is amended. I'm sorry? I'm sorry, Article 37, I'm sorry. So we have an amended article now, Article 37. Discussion. All in favor of Article 37 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Article 37 is adopted unanimously. Article 38, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $17,946 to pay Whitman's share of the cost to resurface the gymnasium floor after 15 years of use. This will completely sand and refinish the floor to prevent the need for a complete gym floor replacement. Estimated cost $30,000, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Linum.
Mr. Moderator, move to amend Article 38 for funding to read to appropriate $17,496 from free cash. I'm sorry, am I on the wrong article? 17,946.
Yes. We have a motion and a second to amend Article 38 to see if the town will vote to appropriate $17,946 from free cash to pay Whitman's share of the cost to resurface the gymnasium floor after 15 years of use. This will completely sand and refinish the floor to prevent the need for a complete gym floor replacement. Estimated cost $30,000, or take any other action relative thereto. Discussion of the amendment. Yes, ma'am.
Mary Fox, 565 Washington Street, and I'm in Massachusetts now. I would like to know, from Mr. Linum, why is, why are all of these school expenditures coming out of free cash? Why are they not coming out of capital? Because it seems to me that a floor, doors, latches, et cetera, would be rather permanent, or at least have some lifetime. So I'd like to know that, because free cash is exactly, well, actually, I don't understand that either, but.
Let me explain it for you.
Sure, go right ahead.
Each year.
But may I remind you, you and I have had many talks.
Yes, we have. Each year, the town raises money through taxation and receipts, and we expend money. What remains at the end of the year, after all of the balances are adjusted and what has not been spent and returned to the general fund, is free cash. Typically, that free cash is used for capital expenditures and for stabilization funds. We have $2.6 million in our stabilization account, so right now, we're not looking to increase that. We are, however, looking to increase our capital stabilization account, which is a fund from which we pay for capital expenditures above and beyond what's in the tax levy. Each year, we expect that part of the free cash will be appropriated to stabilization, and part of the free cash will be utilized to pay for one-time items, which typically are what capital expenditures are. So in this town meeting, we are starting with $439,000 in free cash. We will end the meeting with $143,820 in free cash, if everything is voted the way it's presented. And those are all primarily capital expenditures.
Any other discussion of the amendment of Article 38?
But they're coming out of free cash. The capital expenditures, but they're coming out of free cash.
Yes.
Didn't you just say that?
Yes.
How is this going to impact, let me direct this maybe toward the Finance Committee, who will be working on the override in the fall. How is this going to impact on your numbers? Can I have someone get, like?
It won't.
It seems to me that you all okayed almost everything that's on here. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Yeah, the Finance Committee has evaluated what the long-term needs are and the short-term needs are for capital expenditures. We do realize that there is going to be a process by which we really take a long look at what needs to be done for future capital expenditures. But these particular capital expenditures have been fully explained to the Finance Committee, and like I said, our recommendations are going to be presented every time one of these articles comes up. Thank you.
Other discussion of the amendment to Article 38. All right, then, the vote, we'll now vote to amend Article 38. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Article 38 is adopted unanimously. Discussion of the amended article. Yes, sir?
John Gold, Rosen 238 South Ave. For this and any of the other articles that, for Whitman Hansen, and involve expenditures by both towns, could you tell us where Hansen stands on these articles?
Mr. Linum.
Hansen approved their share of this expenditure, $12,054, in May.
Other discussion of Article 38 as amended. Mr. Anderson?
And the Finance Committee voted to recommend this Article 7-0.
Yes, sir.
John Galvin, 41 High Street. You were mentioning that the Finance Committee is evaluating all these capital expenditures. As Mr. Kane mentioned in his opening statements, isn't that the responsibility of the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee that was passed in 2015? Isn't there a board specifically in Whitman that's supposed to evaluate all these capital expenditures? And will that committee start up again? I thought it was their responsibility to look at all these capital expenditures.
Mr. Linum.
Yes, they will start up. There was, there is a process in place to develop a long-range capital plan and process. It is likely that the process we have already established will change at least a little bit in the formalization of the capital plan, and at that point, we will reconstitute that committee with a charge to follow the capital plan that's established by the town.
Other discussion of the amended Article 38. All right, then, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of Article 38 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Article 38 is adopted. Article 39, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $41,874 to pay Whitman's share of the project, projected cost at the regional high school to construct a handicap ramp to the existing press box at the high school. Estimated cost $70,000, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Linum.
I'd like to move to amend Article 39 for funding purposes to read to appropriate $41,874 from free cash. As per the previous question, Hansen approved $28,126 for this purpose on October of 2018.
All right, then, we have a motion and a second to amend Article 39 to see if the town will vote to appropriate $41,874 from free cash to pay Whitman's share of the projected cost at the regional high school to construct a handicap ramp to the existing press box at the high school. Estimated cost $70,000, or take any other action relative thereto. Discussion of the amendment. All right, all in favor of amending Article 39, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Article 39 is amended unanimously. Discussion of the amended article. Mr. Anderson?
During the district's presentation of this particular article, it was designated as their most important priority, and the Finance Committee votes 7-0 to recommend.
Mr. Small?
I would also like to point out, this is a compliance issue. The current method of being able to use a lift to go up to the press box, as were required under ADA, is not available. That lift is broken. So in order to be in compliance, this is the most economical solution, and a solution that should last for quite some time, being a ramp itself.
All right, other discussion of Article 39. Mr. Gordon?
All right, well, I understand this, that every ramp is for an ADA requirement. My question is about the use of the press box. Is that something that's primarily used by outside press? Who could, who could be sitting on the field watching a football game? Or is it a student thing? Or is it, or is it counselors, teachers that are advising the students that are using the press box? Thank you.
Mr. Small?
It's all of the above, including our students. As a matter of fact, last year, we had to carry one student up on, up to the press box so that he could be able to fulfill his obligation. It is something that we need to be in compliance with in order to have that available.
Any other discussion of the amended Article 39? All right, then, we'll move to a vote on Article 39. All in favor of the amended article, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Article 39 is adopted unanimously. Article 40, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $20,937 to pay Whitman's share of the cost to add thumbpiece latches to all interior classroom and office doors. The current locking system requires a key to lock the door from the inside. Estimated cost $35,000, or take any other action relative thereto. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Anderson?
The district rated this as their number-two priority, and the Finance Committee voted 7-0 to recommend.
Other discussion of Article 40. All right, then, we'll move to a vote, then. All in favor of Article 40, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Article 40 is adopted unanimously. Article 41, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $14,955 to pay Whitman's share of the cost to repair the existing fire lane going around the high school. The existing roadway drainage is becoming more of a hazard due to increased groundwater shedding across the roadway. We are seeing increased ice conditions during winter weather. Estimated cost $25,000, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Linum.
Hansen approved its share at the May 2019 meeting, and the Finance Committee will make a recommendation.
Mr. Anderson?
And the Finance Committee voted 7-0 to recommend this article.
Other discussion of Article 41. All right, then, we'll move to a vote on 41. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Article 41 is carried unanimously. Article 42, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $59,820 to pay Whitman's share of the cost to replace rooftop units. ERU 1 continues not to be dependable, located along the Performing Arts Center. Estimated cost $100,000, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Linum?
Motion to pass over, consistent with Hansen's vote.
We have a motion and a second to pass over Article 42. Discussion. All in favor, Mrs. Fox?
Hi. I was at a meeting where they said, I believe it was Mr. Linum, that if this was not corrected, this condition, they'd have to rent units, which would be more expensive. I'd like to know, A, how old the high school, the Whitman High School is, period. When was it built?
2005.
2005, okay, my math is not great. However, in New York, things last a lot longer, I guess, than they do in Massachusetts. It seems to me, where's the warranty, the guarantee? How does this stuff happen? Because we will have to rent it. There's no, we cannot leave something that is a danger, or whatever.
True, and they have been able to provide a temporary repair. True, and they have been able to provide a temporary repair so that the unit is functioning without having to be replaced immediately at this moment. It's, as it's explained to me, made by an Italian company, and it was state-of-the-art where it uses chilled water in which to provide evaporative cooling. And the parts within it, they had to actually, I believe it was New York, they had to, or Michigan, they had to send out to, to get a new coil. So they have been able to piecemeal it together for the moment. It will need to be replaced, but by taking action right now would do us no good, as Hansen has not taken action either. So that's why we're asking to pass over until we're prepared to exactly move forward.
Excuse me, by Italian, are we identifying the company?
I don't know the name of the company, I'm sorry.
I guess not. However, that's not ethnically. And in New York, okay, fine.
It was built in Italy.
It was built in Italy? An import? Okay, have we learned nothing? Have we learned nothing from Whitman with the, with the situation over there with the Japanese stuff and everything else? Now, I don't mean to be hard-kitted.
Ma'am, 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 we need to confine our comments to the article that we're talking about here.
Excuse me? Okay.
That was part of our lead certification.
Have we learned nothing? To import from Italy, I'm sure we have something available in Massachusetts. One minute you're telling me you've got, it doesn't run that way in New York, the next minute you're telling me you imported something from Italy?
Move the question.
We have a motion, move the question.
Second.
Second. All in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Roll over.
The question is moved.
Thank you.
We have a vote on Article 42. All in favor, passing over Article 42, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 42 is passed over unanimously. Article 43, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $44,865 to pay Whitman's share of the cost to purchase and install solar-powered site lighting. Security lighting is needed for the recreation area and other parking lot areas where trenching and access is limited to underground utilities. Estimated cost $75,000, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion to pass over, as Hansen did.
Motion and a second to pass over Article 43. Discussion. All in favor of passing over Article 43, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 43 is passed over unanimously. Article 44, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $44,865 to pay Whitman's share of the cost to replace two facilities vehicles. Existing vehicles, 2007 and 2008 Chevy vans are beyond their life expectancy, estimated cost $75,000, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion to pass over, as Hansen did.
We have a motion and a second to pass over Article 44. Discussion. All in favor of passing over Article 44, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 44 is passed over unanimously. Article 45, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $125,623 to pay Whitman's share of the cost to repair, replace sections of the main roadway into the Whitman Hansen Regional High School, estimated cost $210,000, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Anderson. Oh, I'm sorry, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, a little slow with the switch here. Move to amend the funding source to read, "to appropriate $134,595 from capital stabilization." I'm sorry.
Article 45.
That, I'm sorry, that was the Finance Committee's recommendation. I was looking at the other one.
There's no motion to amend. Okay, Mr. Anderson.
Article 45, the Finance Committee voted 2-5 not to recommend.
Discussion of Article 45. Yes, ma'am.
Kathleen Otina, 344 Washington Street. What's Hansen's position on this? Did Hansen vote on this?
He voted to approve.
To approve.
All right, any further discussion of Article 45? All right then, all, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Tina Monas, $20 bucks, he'll run. Can we hear from the Finance Committee why they voted to not recommend when Hansen did?
Mr. Anderson.
Yes. Speaking for the majority of the Finance Committee, the discussion centered on the condition of Whitman's roads and the fact that although this is a project that needs to be done, this is something that the Finance Committee feels can be readdressed at a later date. Thank you.
Other discussion of Article 45. All right then, all in favor of Article 45, say aye. Opposed, no.
No.
Article 45 is defeated. Article 46, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $134,595 to pay Whitman's share of the cost to spray, resurface the outdoor track. The current 400-meter track was built in 2005 and is starting to show wear on the corners and spider-cracking on the surface. Because this track has been well-maintained, we were able to exceed its life expectancy of eight to 10 years. It is important to point out that we are trying to prevent the need for full replacement, estimated cost of $225,000, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Lyman.
Motion to amend for source to read, "to appropriate $134,595 from capital stabilization."
Okay, we have a, a motion then to amend Article 46 to read, "to see if the town will vote to appropriate $134,595 from capital stabilization to pay Whitman's share of the cost to spray, resurface the outdoor track. The current 400-meter track was built in 2005 and is starting to show wear on the corners and spider-cracking on the surface. Because this track has been well-maintained, we were able to exceed its life expectancy of eight to 10 years. It is important to point out that we are trying to prevent the need for full replacement, estimated cost $225,000, or take any other action relative thereto." Motion and a second, discussion of the amendment. All right then, we'll move, we'll move to a vote then to amend Article 46. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 46 is amended unanimously. Discussion of Article 46. Mr. Anderson.
The district rated this as their number three priority. Hansen did approve this, and the Whitman Finance Committee voted 6-1-0 to approve.
All right, other discussion of Article 46. Mr. Gordon.
I just want to point out that the number one and the number three priorities of the regional school district are all around the football field. Thank you.
Mr. Small.
If we do not, this is for track and field, not for football. And if we do not take measures today to recoat the surface, we will be looking at a full replacement, which is upwards closer to $1 million. About $750,000 was the estimate. So it does need to be addressed. It is part of normal maintenance, and it has passed its life expectancy for the existing coating.
Other discussion of the amended Article 46. All right then, we'll move to a vote then on Article 46, which does require a two-thirds vote. All in favor of the amended Article 46, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 46 is adopted unanimously. Article 47, to see if the town will vote to reduce the rate, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, can't hear. Okay, it was not unanimous? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not hearing too well up here. Okay, well then, we will, we will do the electronic voting then. I'm sorry. 46, as amended. It's not ready yet. Hang on, we haven't started yet. Right. Are we ready?
We are ready.
Okay, the polls are open then on Article 46 as amended. It's working. All right, the polling is closed? It worked. So Article 46 as amended is adopted. It worked. So it's counting votes. We can see we had 93 responses. Not that everybody voted, but we can see that we had that many. Should we do a standing vote? Okay, we'll, we'll do a standing vote then. Is it, would, would the meeting be, be, be okay with that?
Motion to take a standing vote.
We have a motion to take a standing vote on the amended Article 46. The tellers will, please note, all in favor of Article 46 as amended, please stand. And if the tellers would count the standing people, please. And from the balcony?
The report from the teller from the balcony is 29.
So the, we have 142 voting in favor, that's two-thirds. The article is adopted. Article 47, to see if the town will vote to reduce the rate of interest that accrues on property taxes deferred by eligible taxpayers for temporary financial hardship. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 49, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 1, 1/8A, from 8% to 2%, said rate to apply to deferred taxes assessed for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and thereafter. We have a motion and a second. Discussion of 47. Mr. Anderson.
The Finance Committee voted 7-0 to recommend this article.
Discussion of 47. Mrs. Fox.
Mary Fox. I was at many meetings where we were in the red, and this seems to me to read that some residents will pay 2% and other residents will pay 8%. That seems like a big difference to me. Can someone explain that to me? I know that seniors do have some, you know, some leniency or whatever, but that's like a big difference.
Mr. Lyman.
At previous town meetings, we did reduce other deferred payments to 2%. This particular one is still at 8%. We typically earn between 1.5% and 2.5% interest on our investments. We earn 16% on delinquent taxes. What we're talking about here is a small number of people who are struggling to keep their homes and are seeking to defer taxes until they can either sell the property or improve their circumstances. There are minimum incomes that apply, and there are other conditions for the hardship, and I would urge the town meeting to support this change.
Other discussion of 47.
I just have a little bit of a problem when our schools are suffering. I understand aged people have difficulties, fixed income, et cetera. However, my heart, my soul is with the students. I don't think we can afford to shortchange them and give others the privilege and the opportunity to keep their house, live in Whitman. I was brought up, if you can't afford it, you can't afford it. And that's it. And I, I have got up and said how we can decrease expenses, and I was as much as like booed out of meetings. And I'm really upset about this. I just can't get over it. I cannot get over it. I just can't. And I'm, Massachusetts, I mean, what do you want to become, a welfare state?
Mr. Lyman, did you have a comment?
Yes, I just spoke with the assessors. Our average tax bill in Whitman is somewhere between $5,400 and $5,800 a year. There were three individuals who qualify under this exemption, and it's not the whole tax bill.
Other comments on 47. Mr. Gordon.
I just want to clarify, it seems that this isn't changing the base amount paid by anybody. This is just a penalty interest payment that we're changing.
All right, other comments on 47. All right then, ma'am.
Linda Haley, 266 Auburn Street. I understand that seniors have the option of taking, of me getting a tax credit by doing volunteer service. This would also allow other low-income people to maintain their homes. You'll have properties that will fall under disrepair. You'll have properties, you'll have families that have students in the school system affected. You'll have a, a bunch of abandoned properties with, with not allowing this particular, this particular hardship to go through.
Mr. Lyman.
I would just like to make it clear, these are not exemptions. These are deferrals. They will be paid. If we give an agricultural deferral, somebody can go 20 years deferring taxes. And then ultimately, when the property is sold, we recoup money. This is not a gift.
Of course, it wouldn't be a gift. It is a hardship, and you do expect that people will recover from a hardship. Thank you.
Any other comments on 47? Anybody we haven't heard from? Mrs., we have a motion, move the question. We have a second? All in favor of moving the question, moving to a vote on Article 47, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We will move to a vote. All in favor of Article 47, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 47 is adopted unanimously. Article 48, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be added to the town capitalization stable account, I'm sorry, the town capital stabilization account, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion to pass over.
We have a motion to pass over Article 48. Discussion. All in favor of passing over Article 48, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 48 is passed over unanimously. Article 49, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be added to the town technology stabilization account or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion to pass over.
We have a motion and a second to pass over Article 49. Discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Kathleen Otina, 344 Washington Street. I have a sense that this meeting is coming to a close before it closes. I want to know, when will the Collins Report be available for the public? Because I have been consistently voting no on all of these appropriations.
Ma'am, ma'am, we're trying to keep the comments limited to the discussion on the floor. I'm sure that there are folks in the selectmen's office or elsewhere perhaps who can answer your question.
This is a public forum for public people to find out when the Collins Report.
This is a town meeting to, to vote on, on these articles that are necessary to bless us in the town.
And I've been voting no because no one has paid attention to two speakers who have said that we're rushing through this with no clear plan ahead of us. So I would like not to close town meeting until someone from the Town Board of Selectmen answers the question, when will the Collins Report be available for public consumption?
Other comments on 49.
If you recall, when we discussed the Collins Report, I said I expected to have it in August. It's a time-consuming process. They are working on it. They presented a very high-level overview on Thursday, which really doesn't incorporate a lot of what we need to do. They're waiting for the votes from this one, this town meeting to identify the capital that's been expended and to prepare a prioritized list of requests and a process to address that funding. But it's not ready, and if it's not ready, I can't give it to you.
Any other discussion on Article 49? All right then, all in favor of passing over Article 49, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 49 is passed over unanimously. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second to adjourn the annual town meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. But we are adjourned.